This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order for the Wilmer City Council for Monday, December 21st. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Meskey.
Here.
Schwantus.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Thank you. We will now do the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Also in attendance, we have our council members-elect and councilmember-elect O'Brien. Councilmember-elect Ask had a previous engagement and is unable to attend this evening, but he has assured me that the meeting that he had a conflict on is being moved, and so that will not be a problem in the future going forward. So with that, I would ask if there's any proposed additions or deletions. I have one item, but does the council have any items? In hearing none, I would like to add the outgoing council recognition. Then we'll place that between items seven and eight, where it traditionally has been in the past. And there will be recognition of our three council members who are leaving us. With that, I entertain a motion to approve the amended budget. I'm sorry, amended.
Okay, so move, Mr. Mayor.
Osmus, I'll second.
Motion made by Fagerly, seconded by Osmus, to approve the amended agenda. On the consent items, we have City Clerk Thompson, if you could recite that for us, please. I'm sorry, roll call on approving the agenda.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Hi.
Meskey.
Hi.
Schwantus.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Alvarado.
Hi.
Osmus.
Hi.
Plowman.
Hi.
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 Eight i's, zero n's.
That motion passes. Next, with the consent items, Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of December 7th, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of December 14th, Planning Commission minutes of December 2nd, reappointment as members of the Police Commission, Dennis Anderson and Erlene Cholsted, Planning Commission, Stephanie Carlson, Rice Hospital Board, Shane Johnson, Human Rights Commission, Lilbon Clark IV, John Salgado Maldonado, and Richard Ingham, Municipal Utilities Commission, Nathan Weber, Zoning Appeals Board, Christopher Frank, Economic Development Commission Operations Board, Kelly Tewishah, Cable Advisory Committee, Linda Mathiason, Park and Recreation Board, James Anderson, the Charter Commission, which the Chief District Judge appoints, would be Suzanne Nepkecik, Luke Geiger, and John Satterholm. The accounts payable report for December 3 through December 16, for council's acceptance, the Charter Commission minutes of November 19, the Wilmer Area Convention of Visitors Bureau minutes of November 17, the Human Rights Commission minutes of November 17, and for council's information, the Invest in Wilmer Board minutes of November 18.
Nelson, I can make a motion to approve the consent items.
Second, Schwantus.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Schwantus, to approve the consent items. I just want to point out, for the council's understanding, is that the Economic Development Commission Operations Board, Kelly Tewishah, that's a position that is shared between the county and the city. And so this will be the last time that Kelly Tewishah will be reappointed by the city. And then the next time, that position will be appointed, recommended by the county. So you will not see that at-large position coming through the city for the next nine years if Mr. Tewishah is approved this evening. Also, on the Charter Commission, we forward those names to the district judge, but the Charter Commission can also forward names on their own. They don't need to go through the council. And also, people could go directly to the district judge and ask for consideration. The district judge is the one who appoints those positions. So with those clarifying items, there's a motion been made in second and additional discussion. Councilmember Osmus. You're muted.
I just wanted to point out that the Stephanie Carlson that is up for one of the committees, that is not my daughter. I've had a couple of comments on that. It's a different Stephanie Carlson.
But still a good citizen in our community, so.
Oh, definitely.
As is your daughter. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Meskey.
Hi.
Schwantus.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Alvarado.
Hi.
Osmus.
Hi.
Plowman.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Fagerly.
Hi.
Eight i's, zero n's.
That motion resolution passes as well. Next, we have the recognition of our outgoing city council members. And each of the council members, I had staff prepare a plaque for them. And staff delivered those plaques last week. And I will start with Councilmember Meskey, followed by Alvarado, followed by Schwantus. And I just have a few things I'd like to say about each of the members. First off, I'd like to thank each of them for their service to our community. Serving on the council is not an easy task and something that is a good thing to do. And really appreciate the fact that these three council members have served their terms. Councilmember Meskey is the longest-serving of the three that are leaving us. Councilmember Meskey was elected to the city council in November of 2015, and he replaced Councilmember Doc, and who served a partial term, so that was a special election. He served on the Labor Relations Committee and Finance Committees for the remainder of 2015 and all of 2016. Also during that time, he was on the Airport Commission and Municipal Utilities Commission. He continued on the Municipal Utilities Board through 2020. When reelected in 2017, he was instrumental in the restart of the Human Rights Commission, where he continues to be a commission member. When the committee structure was reinstated in 2019, he became Chair of the Labor Relations Committee and a member of the Community Development Committee. He also served as an alternate on the Main Street Board and as a member of the City Hall Task Force and the Invest in Wilmer Board. So join me in congratulating Councilmember Meskey for his service. Councilmember Meskey, did you want to make any comments, or?
I'll just briefly, just thank the voters of Ward 4 for the opportunity to serve on the council for the past five years. I think the strength of the city organization is found in its people, and our city staff, department heads, council, and mayor have all poised the city to continue its upward trajectory. And I think there are hurdles that exist, but they can be overcome with a team approach. And so again, I am quite thankful for that opportunity.
And again, thank you for your service. Next, Councilmember Alvarado. And I've got to switch between screens here, so I'm hoping that you guys are holding your plaques up so the council members are able to see it. I'm not able to see it, but council members will be able to see it, so. Councilmember Alvarado was elected to the city council in January 2017. He served on the Labor Relations and Public Works, Public Safety Committees for 2019 and 2020. He was also a member during his term on the Economic Development Committee, Chair of the Economic Development, he was in the Joint Operations, the Joint Operations Board is what he was on, Chair of the Fire Code Appeals Board and Member of the Cable Advisory Committee and on a Human Rights Commission for 2017 through 2018. Fernando also served on the City Hall Task Force. So join me in congratulating Councilmember Alvarado for his years of service. Councilmember Alvarado, would you like to make some comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the council and the mayor for the opportunity to work with you. Over the last four years, it's been exciting and a growing experience. And I'm so thankful I had the opportunity to work with you. I'm proud of being part of some of the things that the city did. Water mitigation programs, the League of Women Voters, when they brought in the ceremony to have citizenship at the barn, that was exciting. I was excited, part happy to work with the team that worked with the Wilmer Y, the Highway 23 Coalition. And I've enjoyed working with all the directors, the employees, and everybody that makes this city run. And I can't thank the voters enough for their belief in me. I saw that this past year as I pursued something else, so I was very excited about that. I can't, again, I can't thank everybody enough. So thank you for this opportunity, and I've enjoyed it immensely. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your years of service. Next, we have Councilmember Kathy Schwantus. Kathy was, Councilmember Schwantus was elected to the city council in January 2017, where she served on the Labor Relations and Community Development Committees for 2019 and 2020. She was a member of the Economic Development Commission, Intergovernmental Planning Committee, and an alternate on the Rice Hospital Board and a member of the Vision 2040 Steering Committee from 2017 through 2020. She was also Chair of the City Hall Task Force. Thank you for your years of service, and thank you for your commitment to this community and for the service that you have given. So if you want to show us your plaque, thank you. Councilmember Schwantus, would you like to make any comments?
Thank you very much. It has truly been a pleasure working with you. I would echo what my fellow council members have said and their appreciation to our ward constituents having elected us to this position. It has truly been an honor to serve the people in the city of Wilmer, and I will be proudly displaying my plaque in my office when I can finally work back in the office. But thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you for your service. I do appreciate that. Next, we'll go with the regular agenda, and we'll go to Public Works Safety Report for December 9th. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works, Public Safety Committee met on Wednesday, December 9th, by electronic means. Members present were myself, councilmembers Osmus, Alvarado, and Nelson. Others joining us that evening were our city administrator, Mr. Grommets, our Public Works Director, Mr. Christensen, our fire chief, Mr. Hanson, our police chief, Mr. Felk, our Public Works Superintendent, Mr. Manzer, our engineering administrative assistant, Ms. Albosk. We were also joined by Jared Vogie, representing Bolton and Mink, and Shelby Lindrood was also there with the West Central Tribune. We called our meeting to order at 5:07. The first item on the agenda, as is the case with our first meeting of the month every month, is our public safety updates. Those public safety statistics for both fire and police should be attached into your packets. There were no major sticking points in there, but if you wanted to review, now would be the appropriate time to bring forward any questions for either chief. All right, seeing and hearing none, we move forward in our agenda. The first item discussed was regarding the Robins Island path with regards to snow removal. And this was an item that, full disclosure, I believe Public Works was contacted as well as our city administrator, and I had been contacted by a concerned citizen as well. So I asked respectfully that we have this item added to our agenda for discussion. Basically, what was discussed is the ability, and the feasibility rather, of the city to clear the paths around the Robins Island Park. What current practice was, what future practice may be possible. We had our Public Works Superintendent present, and he did a very good job of detailing the types of equipment that we have and that the city has for snow removal. He did note that during our discussion, the equipment that the city currently has is, number one, after a large-scale snow event, we're pretty taxed, we're pretty maxed out in terms of clearing the main corridors and thoroughfares through the city. So we do have good equipment, but that equipment is working solid and steady. Also, the type of equipment is just a little bit different because of the size and the types of paths out in Robins Island. It is noted that the public drive is an open drive during Celebrate the Light of the World. And so that's great that we can allow vehicle traffic to drive through there. But at such time where that is no longer taking place, those back roads are then closed off to through traffic. Then also through the woods there, we have granite chip-type trails going through the woods that are frequently used by snowshoers and cross-country skiers alike. We do not groom the trails. It's not city practice to groom those trails as we don't have that type of equipment. The Bituminous Trail would start, I believe, on the north end of the pedestrian bridge. And that's kind of the area, I guess, that's mainly in question. As of this time, we don't have the equipment sufficient to actually safely make it over top of that bridge without wrecking the bridge, because, as you know, the decking of the bridges is of varied heights and whatnot. So the larger-scale industrial-quality equipment that we had would likely do some damage to the bridge. Over time, it would tear up the boards on that bridge, so that's not feasible. Our Public Works Superintendent did say, however, that he was in contact with the county and that the county was on the verge of potentially purchasing some new equipment for snow removal, and that those discussions were going to continue so that if it were at all possible to have snow removal equipment that was not so intensive and not so large and industrial, that we could safely take a look at clearing those paths, the subject could potentially be brought up in the future. So it was recommended that we take that for information, let those talks with the county take place. The county has been very good at working with the city regarding the use of specialized equipment. So fingers crossed that those talks go through the appropriate channels, and at such time, that item will be brought back. And as it stands, the snow removal policy for Robins Island will remain the same, and those trails will remain open to snowshoers, cross-country skiers, and whatnot. Any questions regarding that or comments? Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Schwantus, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Plowman. I really appreciate you expanding on that. I was concerned because that citizen had also contacted me. And from reading the minutes, I wasn't able to tell if you'd even had that conversation or not. So I sincerely appreciate the additional information that was shared. Will somebody be getting back to this gentleman to let him know what the outcome of the discussion has been?
Yes, I actually, and thank you for that. I appreciate that. And also, too, as far as the minutes go, I'm not reading the minutes. I'm basically reading my notes that I took during the meeting, so they're my own personal minutes, I guess. So it will be noted, I think, and I do agree with you, duly noted on the minutes. I have attempted to follow up with the individual. I do believe I got an email kicked back to me. So I am going to be making a phone call this week to that individual to let him know the conclusion of that discussion. And I think that we will be able to, in, you know, listening to how the discussion went, I think the county will be open to discussion regarding this item in the future so we can take a look at all available options. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Mayor, certainly.
Yeah, this individual had originally contacted me, and then I forwarded him to yourself and Councilmember Schwantus as the ward representatives for that ward. And I know that he has sent a number of emails, and his concern also has to do with the disc golf people. So was the disc golf conversation had at all or not? It does not reflect in the minutes again.
Yeah, at this time, I believe that email came after this agenda item was, or that follow-up email came up after this was a discussion item. So we kept this germane to just the topic of snow for now before we bring up the topic of disc golf, because I think that might be, those might be two separate conversations. And certainly, now is a good time. If we're going to be talking about disc golf, now is a good time to be talking about it, because I think there may be, it's reasonable to expect that there may be snow on the way. I suppose some people could still be disc golfing. But yes, also, again, duly noted, that is not noted in the minutes, but that conversation was not had, and it will be forthcoming. Any other questions or comments from anybody else? Okay, I'm going to skip over the next item, and I'm going to jump back to item number four, so I'm going to go directly to item number five. And it has to do with our ADA transition plan. And this resulted in an action item. This item was searching for the recommendation regarding the adoption of a resolution accepting the ADA self-evaluation and transition plan from Bolton and Mink. And just a little bit of background, this is something the city is required to do. The ADA transition plan is needed for the city's numerous pedestrian ramps, sidewalks, and trails, crosswalks, and traffic signals. The order proposal was submitted by Bolton and Mink to complete this plan. The services include performing a self-evaluation of the city's policies, practices, and programs to identify ADA deficiencies, as well as completing an ADA transition plan to document those findings and provide a plan and schedule to bring pedestrian facilities into compliance. Pedestrian ramps, crosswalks, and walkways were classified as non-compliant if they contained crumbling pavement, ramps with running slope more than one inch per foot, without a maximum four-by-four landing area, a mainline sidewalk or trail with more than 2% cross-slope, no detectable warning system at the pedestrian plan. The plan prioritized improvements in three levels. Level one were those near government facilities, libraries, hospitals, public housing, senior living facilities, and schools. Level two areas included central business districts, supermarkets, places of worship, major employment sites, and housing complexes. Level three included single-family residential and industrial areas. And we have a whole nice list that Bolton and Mink was able to compile regarding our compliances, those various ratings, and also the projected dollar values. Now, we'll see green, we'll see two main colors. We see green, and we see red. Red, obviously denoting bad, not good, green denoting good. And let me just say that at first blush, it looks like a lot of red. And this is something that we had a little bit of discussion about. And we had the experts at the table with our engineering director, Mr. Christensen, as well as Jared Vogie, who is an expert in his field with Bolton and Mink. As they both explained, really what we need to achieve here, day one, is a plan, and that's what we're doing. We're doing a good evaluation of the city's infrastructure, and we're also coming up using that to help develop a plan. So that's what's needed at this time. Full compliance is not needed at this time. Wouldn't be practical, it wouldn't be feasible from a cost standpoint or otherwise. So what this will enable us to do, and it's something that we already do as a part of our streets program, and street improvements and repairs, replacement, whatnot. Every time that a street is designed or repair is planned out, the ADA compliance tables are brought into place, and they use those as considerations when they're making the updates and the improvements. So even with no additional planning or no additional dollars, these values are going to be changing on an annual basis as we make street and roadway improvements. And say a major one that you might note in the table that was included here was the signal. And this is an area that we expect natural improvement as part of our street improvements plan that is being proposed for 2021, being that a good section of our street improvement plan includes a section of First Street, where a good majority of the city's signals are currently located. So as we work our way from south to north up First Street, and as those roadways and those sidewalk ramps and whatnot are taken out and replaced, they will then become ADA compliant. So long speak to say, these items are currently being addressed and will continue to be addressed within the street improvements plan. And if it is something that we want to throw additional budgeting dollars at, or if grants are available, which Jared from Bolton and Mink did make mention of, that there are certain grants and funding avenues available to tackle these areas further. If we can find the extra funds, when and if we can, we can maybe peel off some additional projects, if that makes sense. So it's kind of a two-pronged approach. It's the approach within the street improvement program itself, and then there's another, you know, if we identify some key areas that we can make some improvements. But we do now have all of the information that we need. We have the report from Bolton and Mink, and we have the ability to retain them as our consultants for making these changes. So all of that going to say, at the end of that discussion, a motion was made and seconded, adopting the resolution accepting the Americans with Disabilities Act Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan from Bolton and Mink, and I will enter that as a motion now.
I'll second that. Alvarado.
Motion made by Plowman, seconded by Alvarado to approve the ADA transition plan discussion. Councilmember Plowman, I do have a question. In what was typed up and submitted to us, your report was much more thorough, and I'm appreciative of that. But it states that it needs approximately $347,300 annually, which is about three points on the levy. Did you talk about that at all? Or I do not recall this coming to me when I was preparing the budget, so I'm assuming that these are new dollars that'll have to be identified.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is a good question to ask, and yes, it is completely germane. We talked about the finances because those sticker prices that we all saw at the committee, they were kind of shocking to us, too. We go, where are we going to come up with this money? But as was made mention by Mr. Vogie and Mr. Christensen, a lot of this, perhaps two-thirds or more, a lot of this is already contained or will already be contained. So the budgetary necessity, that dollar amount that would be necessary, is if we were just going to take those projects and address them project by project, if that makes sense. So if we're doing a street, if we're doing the street project at the same time, those costs are rolled into the street project. But yeah, I understand your question. If we were not going to address any of the ADA compliance issues within the streets program, yes, those funds would definitely need to be allocated from another source. However, the bulk of those were going to be made up for within our street improvements program. And then also, as mentioned, the additional dollars, there were things that could be, you know, grants could be, you know, applied for. You know, some of the larger projects, we may need to take a look at CIP in the future for larger portions. Whereas if we can do it sort of in combination with the streets program, we could have some extra dollars allocated. But I don't, at least it was not my recollection, nor do I think it was the opinion of our consultant, our engineering consultant or our city engineer, that that was going to be a necessary fixed dollar amount extra that we would have to budget. And I guess I could, if I could maybe call on either our administrator or Mr. Christensen, they could maybe. Um, and I guess I could, if I could maybe call on, uh, either our administrator or Mr. Christensen, they could maybe uh, confirm or deny that notion, but that was the discussion I believe that we had.
Certainly. Well, as, as the council all knows, um, when we assess dollars back to the citizenry as a very small percentage of the actual cost, that gets assessed back to the citizens. And the majority of this is paid through, uh, the city in different ways, either through, as you have already stated, uh, through the, uh, capital improvements plan or, uh, any things like that. So, um, it's concerning to me to see, you know, this high of a dollar amount. Um, you know, we adopted our budget last meeting, you know, two weeks ago, we adopted our budget. And all of a sudden we're seeing a $10.4 million, uh, basically expense over 30 years. Um, and that is remarkably close to the cost of the new city hall. So everything kind of ties back to itself. So does either our city administrator or, uh, Mr., uh, and, and your meeting was just two me, two, two days after, uh, we adopted the budget. So, uh, Mr. Grammets, do you wish to speak to this or Mr. Christensen, Mr. Grammets?
Yeah, you know, as, as I think everybody understands, we start the budget back in August and, uh, work through, uh, you know, September, October, November, and ultimately end in December. Uh, had this report been done back in August, we probably would have looked at, you know, the budget and see what it could do in addition to the normal, uh, capital projects that are done on an annual basis. But just given the timing, uh, you know, the, the report was done after the budget was, uh, submitted by the mayor. The, you know, the, the committee didn't see the report until after the budget was approved. Uh, you know, this is, this is not something that we have to, uh, budget necessarily for in 2021. Because anything we do, uh, will be included in our normal, uh, construction budget. Uh, if you want to do something in 2022, additional funds, uh, you've got plenty of advance notice, uh, before August of 22, when the budget gets, uh, put together to figure out any projects you want to do in addition to your street projects. So it's, uh, just a matter of timing and, uh, you know, we'll be, this, this is a long range project. Uh, this isn't something that's going to be done in a year and a half or two years. This, this will go on for a long time. Uh, many cities have done this, you know, before. And it's just something you, you, uh, do a little bit at a time as, as your funds are available.
Additional comments or questions? Did Mr. Christensen wish to speak? Councilmember Nelson, I do see you there.
I think Mr. Grammets covered it pretty well. Um, the main idea here is to get the plan in place to secure our future state and federal funding.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
I was just going to comment, um, that this is, this simply approved the plan. Um, I do think that the council should probably be looking at what items are listed as level one, level two, to see if there are some things that we should be doing before we are going to do street work or, or, you know, if we're going to need to allocate funds in the future. But this, this motion was to accept the plan so that we are in compliance um, with that. And, but I do think that there's more work to be done to look at the list that's in there. And that's why, um, the whole document was sent out, um, to see it, are there other things that should be being looked at before we do street improvements? Or what, before the streets are included in the improvement process? Cause it could be a long time before we do some streets and there are probably, there could be level one issues that should be addressed before that.
Additional comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Asmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Aye. Baggerly.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Eight eyes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the next item following that, uh, was taking a look at our 2021 improvement report and ordering the improvement hearing for January 19th, 2021. Um, in accordance with chapter 429 of Minnesota State statute, an improvement report is required to be formally received by an improvement hearing. It's required to be ordered by the city council for 2021 improvement projects. The hearing explains the proposed improvements and allows public comment to be received on projects to be assessed. The list of projects and other proposed, uh, sorry, the list of streets and other proposed projects to be assessed for 2021 has been prepared and the report explains the proposed improvements and estimated costs. Sources of funding for the 2021 improvement projects includes monies from the Wilmer Municipal Utilities assessments and state aid funds. Also, uh, other, uh, bonding and whatnot is being, um, discussed at the appropriate level uh, by the appropriate entities and, uh, how those projects are funded. Now, the question is, we do, we did receive a kind of a presentation along with this report. And it should be included in the minutes tonight. Um, and so I guess I would just look for a little bit of feedback because I don't want uh, the council to feel as though they're missing out on this report. However, it was noted by our city, uh, engineer that this, uh, very report, uh, the engineering report would be presented at the hearing itself. So I guess I would leave it to the mayor or the council to determine whether or not they wanted our city engineer to present this tonight or whether or not this is something that could wait until that hearing date. Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I just ask if you have any suggestions or recommendations?
Traditionally, what's been, what's happened in the past is that this is introduced and then it's discussed when the presentation happens at the public hearing. It also happens like you had it happen to your committee where you get the full report beforehand. That's consistent with past practice.
Okay. So in your opinion, it would be okay that, uh, since it's been received and it's now included in our packet, uh, that we could, we could have the full presentation at the time of the hearing?
I would be fine with that, but that's a council decision, not a mayor decision.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I wanted to run it by you first and then I would look for any, any objection. If any members of the council wishes for our city engineer to, uh, to present this for us tonight, speak now or forever hold your peace. Uh, he is certainly willing to do that for us. Okay. Well, that then being the case, um, we will await, we will likely await seeing that um, when it comes to us during the, during the hearing. And so, uh, the first action item that we had to take, uh, was adopting of a resolution receiving the improvement report for the 2021, uh, street improvements. And, uh, and ordering the improvement hearing for January 19th, 2021 at 7:01 PM. And I would enter that motion now.
Second, Alvarado.
Motion made and seconded, made by Plowman, seconded by Alvarado to have a improvement hearing for January 19th, 2021 at 7:01 PM. Discussion.
Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Asmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Baggerly.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Eight eyes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to circle back to item number four with regards to the purchase of, uh, the 2021, uh, dump trucks. And we discussed this briefly. Uh, we discussed the purchase of a couple of dump trucks that were going to replace one and also that was going to, uh, another that would be able to replace a uh, 2005 John Deere loader, uh, current state contract expires December 31st of this year. And, uh, the highlight of this item was the fact that, um, the companies that are making and applying all the attachments and hardware to these trucks are running so far behind, um, that the city is looking at, uh, we're trying to get ahead of the game so that when we actually push these purchases through, we are not, um, nine months to a year behind. However, we were discussing, uh, at the time, the discussion started to cross over into the financial piece, uh, heavy into the financial piece. So a motion was made and seconded, uh, that before anything happened, um, that this item be kicked over to the finance committee for further discussion and approval before being brought to the council. Uh, so with that motion made and seconded, I would enter that motion now.
I need some clarity on the motion. I'm sorry. Councilmember Plowman, I need some clarity on the motion. Um, so when I read the minutes, it says that we're supposed to begin the purchase process. But what I heard you just say is that there was a motion made to send it to finance. So is the motion to approve the purchases or to send it to finance?
Can I, maybe, uh, maybe I can call on our city administrator. He was, he was at the meeting and, uh, and he's got his notes as well. Um, I apologize because I'm going from personal notes here and I'm also going from minutes that I have. Um, so I'm doing the best that I can. Um, but whether or not that was a contingency of the motion or whether or not the motion was directly to send it to finance, I know that it was to send to finance, but I do not know if that was a contingency or the motion itself.
And the reason I'm asking is that on my cheat sheet that I get from staff, it doesn't have this item on it at all. And when I read the minutes that were prepared, it says that a motion was made by Nelson, seconded by Alvarado directing staff to begin the purchase process in 2020 for the two international dump trucks. Then there's a bunch more verbiage. And then it says the committee requested that the item be brought to the finance committee for discussion and further approval. And that's what I thought your motion was. So I'm, I'm seeking clarification on your motion is what I'm trying to get to.
And this may be my, this may be my mistake. I apologize if that was a, uh, contingency authorizing the purchasing process to begin um, prior to it going to finance, but maybe our city administrator would be willing to help, uh, add some clarification if you would please.
Mr. Grammets.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and city council members, I believe the question that was, uh, being, uh, requested of finance was how does the city account for money budgeted in 2021 to be actually encumbered in 2020? And if it was okay to do so, that, that the, the purchase would continue? Um, you know, you know, through, uh, through ordering before the end of the year so we can take advantage of, uh, first off, the lower price and secondly, timing of, uh, getting the vehicles here, uh, faster than if we waited. And, uh, it's my understanding that the, uh, you know, finance, uh, did, uh, review this. And, uh, we've, uh, I guess made a determination that, that, uh, it's perfectly fine to encumber the 2021 funds, you know, in this last week of 2020. Uh, there's a process to do that, but it needs to, uh, it needs to follow the, the finance, you know, uh, encumbering process. And I believe that's, that's what would be necessary to finally, uh, authorize the purchase of these vehicles with the associated, uh, funding of roughly $440,000. I'm looking here. In, in finance, you'll see that this issue is also on the agenda, which it calls for adopting a resolution to approve the actual monetary aspect of this. So what you have is Public Works saying, we want to purchase it, but we want to make sure finance is okay with the legality of the, the two years monies. Finance will bring it up when you get to that point in the agenda.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson, can you read me the motion as you have it, uh, written down?
Um, it was basically to bring the discussion forward to the finance department for their, for their approval.
Okay. With that being said, Councilmember Plowman, I would respectfully request you to, uh, change your motion if you chose to, to include the purchasing process of the 20, in 2020 of the two international dump trucks scheduled to be replacement and to forward it to finance so that it's encompassing. And we've done this before. This is nothing new. Um, we've done this numerous times in the past, council will remember that. But I think that we need to have the, I'm trying to catch the piece of we're going to make the purchase. Going to finance is appropriate. I mean, finance has to approve it. But coming back, you know, if that's what your desire is, is to make the purchase, it's not simply to send it to, it's not simply to send it to finance. You want to approve the purchase because when I look at finance, I see that they approve the process, but not necessarily the vehicle. I'm trying to get it all done. It's cumbersome when it's in two different committees. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. Um, the, the finance motion is to avoid having an audit report or an audit, um, comment made that we are spending money in next year. So in my mind, Public Works approved the purchase, finance approved using the money so that we don't end up spending, that we did it correctly.
Correct. That's exactly how I understand it as well. And that's why I asked for the city clerk to recite back what her, uh, understanding was of the motion. And what I'm saying is to get done what I've heard you say you want to do, I believe you have to include the purchase in your motion, which it was not done. So if you wish to make it as two motions, you certainly can. Or if you wish to amend your motion, it's your choice. Councilmember Rosmas.
Okay. Not, not to confuse this, but when you say that we've done this before, is this what we've done on the playground equipment in order to get, uh, the two for one kind of thing for our buck? With purchasing equipment early?
Yep, yep. And we did it for fire, we've done it for fire trucks. I think we did it for Public Works, uh, for the street sweeper. I think we did it either last year or the year before. So this is, it's not a new process, but what Councilmember Nelson is stating is that it has to be documented so we don't have an audit finding. So it's all being done the way we, we have done in the past. Councilmember Nelson.
The car report, the city council action request report was attached to the finance, um, which is talking about the purchase. So I don't know why it wasn't attached in the Public Works, um, part of it, but it is in the finance part where it's stating to purchase it, um, to purchase the equipment with the dollar amounts.
I will, I'll, I'll follow up on, um, the mayor's suggestion and hopefully just streamline this and, and move on. Um, I would like to amend my motion, um, and that would be, uh, directing staff to begin the purchase process in 2020 of two international dump trucks scheduled for replacement in 2021. And to also, uh, forward to the finance committee for further discussion and financial approval.
Is the secondor of the motion okay with that?
Yes.
Motion has been made by Plowman, seconded by Nelson to approve sending the purchasing process for vehicles in 2021, being purchased in 2020 and to forward it to the finance committee for additional action. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Asmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Aye. Baggerly.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Eyes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. I need to apologize to Councilmember Alvarado. I had written down AN here. And, but I believe in, uh, going through the motions in my mind, I believe you were the secondor. I apologize for that. I called on Councilmember Nelson for that second. So it was my mistake. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, that did conclude our meeting for that evening. It looks like we adjourned right around 7:53 PM. And with that, I would move to file the minutes.
Nelson's second.
Motion by Plowman, seconded by Nelson to file the minutes of Public Works Committee. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Muske.
Aye.
Chantis.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Elvorado.
Aye.
Eight eyes, zero nays.
That resolution pass, that motion passes. Next, we have the Finance Committee Minutes of December 10th. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. The Finance Committee of the City of Wilmer met at 5:00 PM on Monday, December 10th via teleconference. Those presenters were Councilmember Nelson, Fagerly, and Osmus. Others on the teleconference were Finance Director Okens, Councilmember-elect Butterfield, and Councilmember-elect O'Brien. Staff requested that two items be added to the agenda. The first one was a resolution to fund two dump trucks for Public Works. And the second was a motion to designate recording of the local option sales tax legal fees and building permit fees. We first had our November Finance Report that was presented. It is in your packet for your review. We received that report. Staff noted that the capital outlay and capital improvement expenditures with the committee, the process of vehicle replacement schedule was discussed and it was noted that the vehicle replacement policy and the five-year capital improvement program policy will be reviewed at a future finance meeting after the questions that were asked during that timeframe. Revenues and expenditures of the general fund and wastewater, waste treatment fund were also discussed and that was received for information. Our first action item was to, a resolution regarding the purchasing of trucks for Public Works. And we've already listened to the information regarding that. This purchase was budgeted in 2021 in the amount of 220,000 each for a total of 440,000. The council has the option of using public improvement revolving PIR funds, which are designated to cover major purchases in the interim while funding can be found. It was proposed that the PIR funds be used at this time to purchase these two vehicles in 2020 until 2021 funds can be expended January 1st. It was moved and seconded to recommend the resolution to direct staff to begin the purchase of the two. I'm not sure if we'll need to change this, but that's what it says. To begin the purchase of the two international dump trucks and appropriate 440,000 from the public improvement revolving funds for this purchase, which is to be repaid on January 1, 2021 by the 2021 budget. I would enter that motion now to appropriate the 440,000 from the public improvement revolving funds.
Osmus, second.
Motion made and seconded to approve using PIR funds to make these purchases of 440,000. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Muske.
Aye.
Chantis.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Elvorado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Eight eyes, zero nays.
That motion pa, that resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Our next item was to review the motion that had been tabled regarding the local option sales tax projects, legal fees, and city permit fees. And it was recommended that we ask for a correction of the specific wording of this motion so that it can be determined to avoid issues in the future regarding its interpretation. And we've had a discussion about this one before and we will have a discussion about it again. And so it will come back to us at our next meeting. Is there anyone who has any questions on that? That concluded. We had a department report and left future agenda items as future agenda. And there was no other business to come before the meeting, to come before the committee. And the meeting was adjourned and I would make a motion to enter the minutes now, to approve the minutes now.
Osmus, second.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Osmus to file the minutes of the December 10th Finance Committee. Discussion.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Muske.
Aye.
Chantis.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Elvorado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Eight eyes, zero nays.
Resolution, that motion passes. Next, we have the Community Development Committee Minutes of December 14th. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met Monday, December 14th, 5:15. Present was myself, Davis, Muske, and Chantis. Also present was Dr. Ramstead, Director of Planning and Development, Sarah Swedberg, City Planner, Robert Scott, City Attorney, and the West Central Tribune. Item three was a discussion item. It was for information only. It was a proposed termination of a tax abatement agreement with Rockstep LLC. The city attorney presented the history of the tax abatement agreement between the city and Rockstep. But we did get a request from the county to terminate this agreement. And the school board and school district will also be terminating it. But we'll be discussing this later in the meeting. It'll be item number 15. So this was just for information only because we needed some more data. That wasn't present that Monday. Item four is an action item. This is dealing with Blue Cross Blue Shield welcoming resolution public art agreements. Staff presented the history of the partnership with Blue Cross Blue Shield, Healthy Together Wilmer Program. Staff was approached by Wendy Foley from Blue Cross Blue Shield as they are ending their five-year partnership in Wilmer. Blue Cross Blue Shield, like Wilmer, artists on Main Street work and found that the program aligned well with their values as an organization. As a parting gift to the city, Blue Cross Blue Shield has partnered with Wilmer Main Street for the creation of two public art pieces, a mural and a sculpture that realizes the city's welcoming resolution. There was a total of six applicants. Staff presented Wilmer Main Street's recommendation for the two artists to enter into agreements for the creation and installation of these public art pieces. Blue Cross Blue Shield donated 27,000 for this project, 15,000 for the sculpture artists, 10,000 for the mural artists, and 2,000 for administrative program costs to the city. There was two motions made by the committee for the city to adopt the resolutions authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into contracts. The first one is for Lily Lennox. And she'll be doing the mural contract. So I'll make that motion, enter into a contract with Lily Lennox.
Muske, second.
Motion by Fagerly, seconded by Muske to approve a contract for the mural, mural for downtown. Discussion. Councilmember Muske.
There's going to actually be, it's not one mural. In the committee level, we got to see several examples from this artist. And this will be several smaller murals that will be around the downtown area. Very impressive artist. And so it did, we did have a lot of questions about the artwork at the committee level. So I'm, I'm thinking it will be a really great project.
This is discussion. Councilmember Elvorado.
Yeah, I was just wondering, did you guys, did you have the opportunity to visit with the artist and hear some of her thoughts or was it just a proposal?
It was just a proposal to us. I think Main Street, Wilmer members and Sarah Swedberg Planner met with them. So you can, Sarah, if you want to reply to that.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, Wilmer Main Street reviewed all of these applications. I have been in contact with these two artists. There are examples that were also included in your packets, some images and different things from the two applicants to kind of get a better feel for, feel for their work.
Additional comments?
Thank you. Thank you.
Additional comments? Questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Muske.
Aye.
This.
Aye.
Davis. Elvorado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was a second motion made and seconded to recommend the adoption of the resolution authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into the welcoming resolution sculpture artist service contract with James Church. Make that one.
Second.
Motion by Fagerly, seconded by Chantis to approve for the sculpture. The contract for sculpture, sculpture, discussion.
Let me just say that this work is hopefully going to be done before the Wilmer Fest celebration, which we will have this year or in 2021. So.
I like your optimistic thinking.
That should be a good thing.
Councilmember Muske.
First of all, I apologize to Planner Swedberg. I did see the pictures were in there, so please look at them. When you do so, this sculpture will not be made of the bronze that you'll see a lot of those samples in there. This will be, is my understanding, made of different types of fabric that will be weatherproofed and in plastic. So again, it sounded very unique and it will be, have a placement somewhere in the downtown area.
Ms. Swedberg.
Yes. I did follow up with James Church because there were some questions on the construction and kind of just the material makeup of the sculpture. When artists were applying, the medium was up to their choice with the understanding that this would be outside in Minnesota. So it should be, you know, constructed of materials that makes sense for those conditions. And James will have some elements of the bronze in this particular sculpture. It will also include the fabric piece that Councilmember Muske mentioned. And then I had, I had described it as plexiglass, kind of being encased in plexiglass, the fabric itself at our meeting. But in further discussion with James, it would actually be coated in like a resin. And then he described it as a resin that can sometimes be used in, in other construction processes, like with concrete and different things. So he's confident that it, that it would be weather, weather appropriate.
Thank you. Additional comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Muske.
Aye.
Chantis.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Elvorado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Aye. Fagerly.
Aye.
Eyes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. I'd also like to thank Blue Cross Blue Shield for their investment in our community. They invested millions of dollars and to be giving us this parting gift is really a true gift to our community and something that took a lot of work and really was the framework behind Vision 2040 that allowed these investments to be made within our community. And really want to give a shout out to Vision 2042 for the leadership that they provided and had in place, which made Blue Cross Blue Shield willing to come to Wilmer to make their investments. So thank you for them. I know I've been in contact with a lot of people from the leadership at Blue Cross Blue Shield and they are really pleased with the work that was done here in Wilmer. So, Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item five was future agenda items. Item six, department updates. Staff presented updates on the Wilmer Comp Plan package and proposed future formation of a Comp Plan Task Force. Progress is being made and staff is hoping that after the first of the year, they will be able to request that the task force be formed. And that's going to be for you, Mr. Mayor. So heads up, I know Dr. Ramstead sent you an email about it. Staff also mentioned that the city planner will be coordinating with the HRA and the Main Street Board to administer the new Renaissance Zone storefront incentive, which will be active after the first of the year and funded by grants administered by the HRA. Staff reported that the fact sheets are being developed for the planning commission that will describe buildings within the Renaissance Zone that staff believe are historically significant to Wilmer so that the planning commission may establish an eligibility list for new voluntary heritage designation program. Once the eligibility list is adopted, staff will send those property owners a letter and information on the benefits of the program and how the owners may voluntarily register their property in the heritage program. It was also mentioned that in 2022, staff hope to present proposal to expand the storefront incentive to the heritage program. Staff is, is getting new software for the city planner because budgeted in the 2021 budget that will be greatly helpful to the planner's capabilities with 3D modeling and hub website for public interface with the apartment and its various incentives. Staff reported that data continues to be entered into the new logistic rental licensing software purchased earlier this year and it's about two-thirds completed. The software will automate the rental licensing program, minimize the use of paper and increase efficiencies in record keeping. Hopefully. With that, there was a motion to adjourn and we adjourned at 6:15. And I move to file the minutes unless there's any questions.
Muske, second.
Motion by Fagerly, seconded by Muske to file the minutes. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Chantis.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Elvorado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson. Nelson.
You stepped away.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Muske.
Aye.
Seven eyes. Zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we have the Labor Relations Committee, Councilmember Muske.
Yes, the Labor Committee met December 14th. Our regular council membership was in attendance, as was Human Resource Director Beckman and Councilmember-elect Ask. We only had one item on the agenda and that was a review of the 2021 Personnel Policy or their handbook that we look at. And in your packet this evening, those changes are in there. I will point out of those lists of attachments, the criminal history background check, the sexual harassment prevention policy, as well as the respectful workplace policy. check, the sexual harassment prevention policy, as well as the respectful workplace policy were lifted in their entirety from the League of Minnesota Cities that they had their attorneys review. We, only modification I will tell you that we made from there, there was a specific example that was used with law enforcement that we thought painted law enforcement in an unfavorable light. There was no need to put the example in there. So we took the example out. But the remaining pieces, there are some small pieces in there, we can go over here quickly, that have to do with vacation donation and have to do with sick leave payout as well as some durations of time. So in your packet, it begins on page 284. Again, in there is a, again, lifted piece from the League of Minnesota Cities and that gets into your conduct pieces. And that, I should point out, the conduct pieces, as a city employee, also are relevant for all levels of folks associated with the city. And so that talks about proper behavior, if you will, or inappropriate behavior. The, and you'll see also a few red links. Those are hyperlinks to the actual state statutes. We had talked about that would be something that we were leaning towards. So an employee could now link immediately with the, with the handbook right to the state statute if they had any additional questions. And so the committee was very impressed with HR Director Beckman's pointing and putting those things in there because I think that will help put that information right at the fingertips of our employees. The first piece that is a unique Wilmer language, I would direct you to page 289 in your packet or page 25 in the document that she's provided. This is about vacation leave and saying that you can take vacation leave in increments of 15 minutes versus one hour. That frees up people that are working half days or, or segments of days that they can now do that at 15 minute intervals. The next page is a donation of those hours and vacation hours, and that's on page 26 or 290 in your packet. The donation of vacation time is something that is new to the city. You'll find at the very end of the attachment, some research that was done with other cities. This is the one that the committee had the most questions on to make sure that we are coming up with some kind of an idea here that would be in line with other cities. And I think we are safely within the realm of other cities there that 16 hours, you could see there, it can be donated as long as the recipient does not exceed their maximum vacation accumulation. And there are a lot of reasons that employees may want to donate that vacation time. In the very next paragraph, another policy thing that would be for Wilmer is the right to waive the two or four week notice in some folks' cases, separation from the city. Then after that, you get into a lot of the lifted language from the league, the sexual harassment policy, respectful workplace policy. And then you'll see the sexual harassment prevention policy on 297. Again, I do appreciate the markup of version that you have in your packet. You should be able to clearly see where that language was lifted from the league. Workful, respectful workplace policy follows that. And truly, you don't get to another uniquely Wilmer piece until you get to page 309 in your packet, which is the sick leave upon separation policy. The last sentence in that piece is talking about when you, termination or death benefits shall be limited to, we had 840 hours and previously, the recommendation from staff was to change that to 850. So there's congruency across groups. There was some discussion about one particular group has a maximum of 900, but the committee did not see that as a direction that the council maybe wanted to go in. We've had those discussions before. So the recommendation is to move that to 850. The last page on 310 does give you the pieces of that donated vacation time. So you can see which cities do that and which do not and what their hours are maxed out. I'll stand for questions. If you have questions about the league language, I would direct those to the city attorney, most likely, or to HR Director Beckman. But there was a motion to approve these changes to the person that the 2021 Personnel Policy. It came out of the committee with a unanimous vote to support that. And so I will entertain or move that motion at this time.
Second, Alvarado.
Was then made by Maskey, seconded by Alvarado to approve the changes to the personnel policy updated in 2021. Discussions. Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make it clear that if there is any problem within the ranks, any of our employees have an issue, they do not have to go to a supervisor. There are other avenues available to them. And I think that's important to know and feel comfortable in knowing. You can talk to the city administrator, the supervisor, supervisor, a city attorney, whatever, whatever it takes to make sure you feel comfortable in voicing a complaint if there is an, or issue, if there is an issue. And, and I also think it's important to note that it, this is not just directed at salary, I mean, at the, it goes from the top, from the directors down throughout the rank. So this, this is a all inclusive program and I think everybody should be aware of that. And if they have to use it, it's, it's open to everybody and it's not exclusive to just, you know, the rank and file, let's say, or, or something like that. It's, it's intended to take care of everybody in the city of Wilmer. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Maskey, you may know this answer or else, I'm sure Ms. Beckman does. Was this reviewed by our HR attorney?
The Wilmer pieces, I do not know. Obviously, the other pieces were reviewed, not from our attorneys, but the league attorneys. So that would be a question for HR Director Beckman or for Robert Scott if they reviewed those that I've identified clearly as Wilmer pieces.
Mr. Grammets, are you aware at all or where should we go with the conversation?
Maybe Samantha can deal with directly because she's, she's been working with it, this and other issues with the labor attorney.
Ms. Beckman.
Yeah, so like Councilmember Maskey said, the league attorney did review and make all of the changes that the league recommended. Those were reviewed by their labor attorney. Our changes, I did not run by our attorney because we weren't, the changes that we made just personally were clearing up internal confusion over how the policy should be interpreted. So we didn't actually change any of the policies or how they function. We just tried to make the language clearer so that it wasn't confusing to employees when they read it. So I think the only change we made that was allowing the vacation donation time that actually changed our policy and that one we did mirror other cities and what they offered at their city.
Okay. I can learn and I was in negotiations on the 15 minute thing. As contentious. And so I was just wanting to, and, and our attorney was involved in those conversations. So I just wanted to make sure that those were, that it was addressed. So if, if that's all been addressed, I'm, I'm fine with it. So then a motion made and seconded. Mr. Grammets.
Yeah, I think just for everyone's, you know, understanding that there are groups within the, the city that already have the 15 minutes. It was probably a minority that had to take their allocation in hour increments. So this really is, you know, normalizing a kind of across the board, kind of a, of a thing instead of having two different, you know, policies, but we'll have one.
Right. But I think that Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember Maskey will remember the, this issue back early on. Councilmember Nelson, did you have your hand up?
I did. Sorry. I seem to be, voices are cutting in and out for me. I apologize. So is there any sense of urgency? Is this something that we should have reviewed if there are concerns to make sure that we haven't missed something or something that would be a concern? I guess I, I'm a little surprised that we didn't have it reviewed in light of, of some of the things that are in there, but I'm not sure. You know, I know some pieces are from the league, but some are from us. And so I'm just curious about that.
Well, I can tell you the Labor Committee really did not have a problem with the 15 minute increment piece because it was congruent with other pieces. I didn't know if we were necessarily, I didn't feel as if we were giving away something that could have been negotiated. I don't believe, I could see if you, if you believe that, we could certainly explore that. But the vacation donation time, I guess that's where you fall in on vacation time earned by an employee, whether or not they could donate it to somebody who may have a physical ailment that is maybe eating up most of their time. And so that seemed fairly standard. That's why we had the research done on that piece. So again, I don't know if that would be a piece that you would ever include in negotiations necessarily. So at least from the Labor Committee standpoint, we thought that those pieces did not seem out of line or, or something that would have to be in negotiations. Certainly, it's those pieces, I would say it's those two pieces as well as the 850 change at the end as far as cashing out sick leave. Those three pieces would be the only ones that were not reviewed, if you will, by an attorney.
Well, as I stated before.
I'm sorry. I, I guess I'm still questioning whether they should be.
Ms. Beckman, and then I'm going to call on our city attorney.
Sounds good. I did just want to let you know, every union contract currently does allow employees to use 15 minute increments of vacation time. This policy would only affect the non-union employees, allowing them to also use 15 minute increments. So it, it really doesn't affect any of the union employees. And also just wanted to make sure you know, that already is in all of our union contracts to allow the 15 minutes. So if that was the holdup, I, I just wanted to clarify that for you.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, but I also, as I stated earlier, have been negotiations where this is an issue. So I have no problem of moving it forward. I just want to make sure that we know what we're doing. And I know that this has been an issue with unions in their negotiation strategies of decreasing the time as much as they can. So as I've stated before, I've been in, on the other side of the negotiations on these issues. And these are things that bring things to the table when these things are given out. So, Mr. Scott, do you have any interpretation of that at all?
Mayor members of the council, I honestly don't have much to add to the discussion on this point. We have not looked at the policies in any detail. I will just let you know that frequently we do refer cities to the language the league has developed as a very good starting point. That said, sometimes cities do want us to review the final package before it gets approved. I don't, I don't have the firsthand experience about that issue coming up in negotiations or how making this change for consistency would play into future negotiations. So we, we have not reviewed this in detail. We certainly can if the council would feel more comfortable with us doing that.
There's a motion on the table to approve it as submitted, starting in 2021. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Alvarado.
Hi.
Osmus.
Hi.
Baumann.
Hi.
Ben. Hi. Fagerly.
Hi.
Maskey.
Hi.
Schwantus.
Hi.
Eight eyes, zero knees.
That motion passes. Councilmember Maskey.
After that, we had miscellaneous and a few items came up there. The first was a report to let everybody know of the status of COVID with our city staff. And we got a report that 15% of city staff had contracted COVID in the last nine months and 12 of them had contracted it in the last five weeks, which seems to be consistent with where the numbers for the county had been. That was just for information. So we had understood where we were as a city. Then the staff asked the opinion of the committee about posting the Assistant Finance Director position because it was approved in the 2021 budget. The committee said it was approved in the budget. We thought that would be fine. I think they were just trying to use feelers to see where the committee lied with that. Obviously, the ultimate decision would be made by the council. And then the last piece that came up was about transition for the city administrator in light of the pending resignation, retirement, if you will, of our city administrator Grammets. And so after that discussion, a motion was made by Councilmember Schwantus, seconded by Councilmember Davis, to begin that search process as soon as possible with an external consultant to search for our next city administrator. And as that is a motion that came out of the committee, I will forward that motion at this time.
Second. Schwantus.
Motion been made and seconded to begin the search process as soon as possible through an external consultant for the city or the next city administrator. Discussion. Councilmember Maskey.
And in some of that conversation, we've, we've searched for city administrators a few times with this council who is currently sitting. And, and you do know that that does take a very long time. We've tried different ways of doing that. All of them are, are very labor intensive and it takes a lot of steps and a lot of recruiting and so on to do that. We by no means wanted to handcuff the new council in that pursuit, but we believe that you probably need to start that process as soon as possible. I know the Labor Committee will be a different thing. It usually spearheads that. Three quarters of that committee will be different. And so I think you probably will need some adequate time for planning.
Additional comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Hi.
Osmus.
Hi.
Baumann.
Hi.
Hi. Fagerly.
Hi.
Maskey.
Hi.
Schwantus.
Hi.
Davis. Davis.
Hi.
Eight eyes, zero knees.
That motion passes. Ms. Beckman, just to let you know, you have your audio on still. Not sure if you want to shut that off or not. Councilmember Maskey.
There was no more business to come before labor, so I would move to file the minutes.
Second, Schwantus.
Was been made by Maskey, seconded by Schwantus to file the minutes. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a question on the Assistant Finance Director. Will, will that be coming back to us at a future meeting or it was the committee's recommendation that it come to the council? I'm just wondering how it's going to come to the council.
Councilmember Maskey.
I do not know. That was, we were, we were simply asked about what our opinion was on the matter and we shared it. I think that'd be an appropriate question for either the city administrator or the HR director.
Council, Mr. Mr. City Administrator Grammets.
Yeah, I guess I'd be looking for an affirmative motion to continue on with the process.
Councilmember Meskey or Nelson, are either of you in favor of making a motion, make it with that direction? The last time that I heard there was question in regards to if it should be an Assistant Finance Director or an accounting clerk position? And I thought that in reading the minutes and that type of thing, I thought that we'd kind of landed on Assistant Finance Director, which is the position I am most in favor of as the mayor, just with the amount of work that needs to be done and things being time. You know, a lot of times we have time sensitive financial information that we have trouble getting on time. And so I think that having an Assistant Finance Director would help. But if either of you are willing to make a motion, Councilmember Meskey, I'll be quiet.
No, I will be more than happy to make that motion. That was the position that we've talked about previously. That's the position we passed at our committee. That is also what was approved in the budget. So if you're looking for a motion to continue that process, the committee was asked, and we we voted on that, that it was a good idea, but I didn't question that Councilmember Nelson brings up as a good one. I didn't know what our next step was, but I would offer the motion to continue in the process of hiring a Assistant Finance Director.
Second by Schwant.
I can second that.
Okay, motion was made by Meskey, seconded by Schwant as first. And I'm wanting some clarification on the timetable because you know, this is a position we had budgeted all of last year and was never filled. And you know, I would, I would maybe ask the administrator, but I would, I would be looking to have that posted. I know you guys have looked at the job description as your committee. You've, as you stated, recommended this position. And so, you know, if we would like to make, add to that or give direction, probably doesn't have to be in the motion. I would like to see this done in the first quarter of twenty twenty one, I think that would be helpful to the administrator. I would think, but.
I would, I would accept that as a friendly amendment to put the timeframe as in the first quarter of the fiscal.
Councilmember Nelson. The motion.
It was my understanding. Okay, sorry. It was my understanding that it was only approved in the budget last year as the accounting clerk. It is now in next year's budget as Assistant Finance Director. I believe I'm correct on that, but so it would be timely that we.
You are, you are correct in that, in what you stated. I know I'm having a lot of internet problems, and I know that Councilmember Nelson froze up there, so if I cut you off, I apologize. But you were froze up there, Councilmember Nelson, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I was simply clarifying that it was, it's now in the twenty twenty one budget as Assistant Finance Director. It was not in last year's budget that way. So we should be good to go.
Just another Councilmember Meskey. You. You're muted, sir. Are you wishing to speak, Councilmember Meskey?
I actually, you froze up, but I didn't hear much of that, but if the friendly, if the friendly amendment went through, I have nothing to say.
The friendly amendment went through, Councilmember Nelson was just clarifying that it was approved in the twenty twenty budget as an accounting position, not an assistant director position. And she wanted to make sure that that was clear with the new members of the council, but also of the current sitting members. Additional discussion. Motion is to approve the posting of the Assistant Finance Director within the first quarter of twenty twenty one and move forward the hiring. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson. Aye. Fagerly.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Schwant.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. We are now to the point of filing the minutes. Councilmember Meskey, I believe you had made that motion. I guess I was probably out of order there because of that motion on the table. I apologize. There's been a motion made and seconded to file the minutes. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Quantas.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we have consideration of on sale and club on sale twenty twenty one liquor license renewals. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you tonight's a request from eight on sale and two club on sale establishments to renew their current Sunday liquor licenses for twenty twenty one. These licenses will be in effect from January one, twenty twenty one, through December thirty first of twenty twenty one, and it's staff's recommendation to approve as presented.
I'll move to approve staff's recommendation.
Second, Alvarado.
Motion by Meskey, seconded by Alvarado to approve staff's recommendation on the liquor license for Sunday liquor license renewals. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, the way it's going, we should probably prorate it now, so we don't have to rebate any of their fees back, so.
Additional discussion. The motion made and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Quantas.
Aye.
Davis. Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Again, that's liquor, and it's a roll call, but it's not required to be a roll call. Anything with liquor is, I'm sorry, anything with liquor is required to be a roll call, even though it's a simple motion. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the sale of general obligation tax bonds series twenty twenty one A. Mr. Olkins.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the next step in the process for issuing the five million G O sales tax revenue bonds. We have with us tonight Doug Green from Baker Tilly to explain what is needed of the council.
Mr. Green.
Thank you very much, Mr. Olkins, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good to see you this evening. Early Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Before you this evening is an authorizing resolution authorizing this city to sell five million dollar general obligation sales tax revenue bonds. What this resolution simply does is is it sets the sale for January nineteenth at ten a.m. It also allows Baker Tilly and staff to move forward with drafting an official statement, which is the offering document to potential bond owner, bondholders. And it authorizes us to advertise for those bids, and that's simply by posting the official statement on the various places where the end writers go to look for upcoming sales. So it's really just the next step in the process. You might recall, we have already gone through the ordinance process, so we kind of got that out of the way, and now we're just on to the regular sale process. In your packet, there's two attachments. The first is a pre-sale summary from Baker Tilly, and it just goes through and highlights just a lot of the key terms with the the bond issuance. And in the back, it does provide estimated amortization schedules. And again, the interest rates are are just estimated, and they won't be finalized until the the day of the sale, but it looks like we're estimating coupon interest rates between point four or five percent in the first year out to one point eight percent in twenty thirty three. Those, those are a few weeks old, but they really haven't changed, and there's not much that happens over the next two weeks really in financial markets, including credit markets and municipal bond markets, so I really wouldn't expect that to change. And so when you take the true interest rate of that, that interest rate scale, we're looking at what, true interest rate of about one point five percent, and that equates to about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. So we're certainly hitting the market at a very good time, to say the least. So over the next few weeks, if the council chooses to proceed, we will continue to put together the offering document. We will prepare for a rating call, which will be on or about January eighth. And these are, these bonds will be publicly issued, so that means we we have to get a credit rating that will be with Moody's Investor Service. City's current credit rating is double A three, I fully, even given everything that's going on, the world city's finances are in solid shape. The economy is hanging in there, so I I fully expect things to to stay the same with that. Though, you know, the last thing I'll mention is, even though we're authorizing the sale to go forward right now and setting the sale for January nineteenth, if something were to happen in the market, financial markets, and the day before the sale or the week before the sale, you know, something it it's just a volatile market where we say, well, we really don't want to enter the credit market, the capital markets at this time. Let's put it off for two weeks. We can, we can do that the morning of. I can, we can bring you the results, results of the sale, if we don't like them, we can reject them and go out for bid. I don't expect that to happen, but just want to let you know, we still have flexibility in the process. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Green, I was just wondering what kind of response time do you think we'll have on on the sales of those bonds on January nineteenth? Would that, would the sales, would the sales of the bonds happen on the nineteenth if we put them out there on the nineteenth?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Alvarado, yes. We, we will have, just about every Monday and Tuesday, sometimes, some Wednesdays, we will have bond sales at nine thirty, ten, ten thirty, eleven. And we might have one, two, three, four, five, six, you know, a day. And the, they will bid at that time, their bids are due at that time, it's all over the internet, and so, and then it just takes about ten minutes for us to verify those bids. And then and then we'll bring them to the council's consideration that evening. So the answer to your question is, they come in at ten a.m. on January nineteenth. Okay, the reason I, the reason I asked is, I know we're in unstable times, but I think is, isn't it the twenty first that we have a new president in the White House? So this might just be a good time to solidify it and get her done and and get it behind before there's that big transition, so that's why I was curious. Thank you.
Additional ca, additional questions for Mr. Green? One of the council's wishes.
Mayor Calvin, this is Nelson. I would be happy to make a motion to introduce a resolution authorizing the sale of general obligation sales tax bonds series twenty twenty one A on January nineteenth, twenty twenty one, in the amount of five million dollars.
Meskey second.
Second that.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Meskey to approve the sale of general obligation sales tax bonds series twenty twenty one A. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Quantas.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Mr. Green, thank you for bringing this information, and I agree, these are very favorable rates and look forward to awarding that contract on the nineteenth. Next, we have a resolution approving amendment number three to the master cooperation agreement for the Wilmer Y project. Mr. Our Public Works Director Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In front of you is yet a third or yet another, it says third, but I won't say it's the last amendment to these master agreements for the Y project. This one here, let me get to it in my agenda. This one here has nothing to do with the city as in as as much as as closing documents, which is why they're doing this in in front of the third closing. The reason that this one is in play is that our name obviously is on the master agreement, and this changes dates within that agreement of this third closing. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell, what's what's changed, which is why we need the new signatures on it. They're trying to get these all, the signatures all gathered by tomorrow afternoon so that they can get this closed, and this is a county and B N S F transaction as far as property goes. But again, they have to get all the, all the agreements or all the signatures rather in place that are that are on the current or or original agreement. Any questions? I'll probably leave it at that unless there's questions from the, from the council.
I have one question, Mr. Christensen. Does this affect anything with the Epitopics project? I know that we had to cross over some land for them. And we wanted to get that in prior to the that bed getting placed. And so does this have anything to do with that at all or not?
No, not at all. This is the master agreement that just makes everybody play well in the sandbox together. The, the conduit is already in place, and it's all part of the contractor and the the agreement with them and MINDOT to get those conduits in place for the, for the utilities. So this, this is completely separate, and and we're, we're still on top of Attorney Scott and I have been working with the, with the railroad to get the sanitary line across, and and so, so we're still in good shape with the Epitopics Utilities.
Okay, thank you. Does council wish to make a motion?
Plowman, I would move to approve.
Osmus, second.
Motion by Plowman, seconded by Osmus to approve the amendment number three to the master cooperation agreement for the Wilmer Y projects. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Meskey.
Aye.
Quantas.
Aye.
Davis. Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is the resolution to approve the termination of tax abatement and subsidy agreement with Rockstep Wilmer LLC. Dr. Ramstead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I defer to City Attorney Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The city received a request, a formal request from Candy High County late, I guess, a week ago now for the city to formally terminate or approve the termination of its tax abatement agreement with Rockstep. And Rockstep, as you know, is the owner of the property known as the Uptown Mall. And brief context, the city approved a tax abatement agreement in twenty sixteen for ten years, which the city agreed to abate the taxes on the increased value in that property for each of the next ten years that would result from improvements that Rockstep agreed to make at that time. So it was an incentive for new development. Since that time, Rockstep has, in fact, as I understand it, made those improvements on the site. The value of the property did not go up as high as the parties had contemplated when they entered into the tax abatement agreement. Nevertheless, the city did collect taxes on the full valuation as determined by the county and has not paid any abatements under the agreement to date. So there's four years, basically twenty seventeen through the current year twenty twenty, in which taxes could have been abated under the agreement had it been followed. In the meantime, Rockstep had brought a tax appeal for two years tax valuations made by the county, arguing that the county had valued the property too high. The county is interested in and has sought a settlement of those tax appeals that had been defending its request to the city to terminate this abatement agreement is part of the settlement discussions. When we presented this to the Community Development Committee meeting last week, we knew of the request. There were a number of outstanding questions about how this fit into the county's efforts. There were some very good questions asked by the committee. I did have follow up discussions with the the county and the attorney handling the defense of the tax appeals and have provided analysis to the council in a privileged memo, which I hope everyone received. But basically, the settlement the county is pursuing involves a trade where the city and each of the other jurisdictions that approve similar abatement agreements would retain all the taxes they've collected over the first four years of that term that would otherwise have been subject to abatement. The value of that to the city is about fifty three thousand dollars. In exchange for that, the county would agree to lower the value on those parcels over the next three years down to approximately the value it had before the abatement agreement was entered into. And then with the jurisdictions terminating the agreements, Rockstep would be free if it so chose to bring another tax appeal challenging the valuation, whatever valuation the county were to establish in twenty twenty three for tax payable year twenty twenty four. That would be the first time that there could be another challenge, which the county might have to defend. So as I mentioned, I did pre- provide a little more detail on the considerations the county is weighing in pursuing the settlement. They are in favor of the settlement along the lines that I've outlined, and they do need the city and the school district to approve the termination of the abatement agreement in order to finalize that settlement. The resolution in your packet does give that approval. It also authorizes the mayor and city administrator to execute whatever documents are necessary to put into effect that settlement. And in visiting with the attorney handling the case for the county, they are still developing the documents. What I expect to happen would be at the point they're ready to finalize things, they will need the city to sign on to a memorandum with Rockstep agreeing to the termination. That probably references the settlement documents the county is going to be signing with Rockstep. As the two parties to that tax appeal. The resolution does condition the authorization for the mayor and administrator to sign any such agreement. The city administrator, city administrator and myself reviewing that document and making sure it's consistent with the settlement and with the parameters of the resolution in your packet. So with that summary, I would certainly welcome any questions the council may have at this point.
Any any questions from the council? Councilmember Fagerly.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the termination of the tax abatement and subsidy agreement with Rockstep. Wilmer.
So you have Meski.
Motion by Meski to terminate the agreement and have the mayor and city administrator sign on behalf of the city, including any endums that come forward. Additional discussion? Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. Just seeking clarification that there isn't any conflict or any issues with if we proceed with the city hall at that location or if we don't, this is a separate transaction. I know some of the parties are the same, but is is there any repercussions or any questions for us that this would make a difference one way or another regarding that?
Mr. Scott.
Mayor, Mayor, members of the council, council member Nelson, that question did come up, and that is something that is factoring into the settlement. The county is considering with Rockstep and pursuing. And obviously, if the city were to take ownership of any portion of property that is at this point taxable and use it for a city hall and community center, that would transform the property, at least the portion of it acquired by the city to be non taxable. My understanding is that part of the discussions between the county and Rockstep are just formalizing the county's position that it would recognize any reduction in value caused by the city taking ownership of a portion of that property. So it does factor in. I don't think that taking this action as requested by the county fundamentally changes that. I think that, you know, reality of the tax impact of the city acquiring a portion of that property is present no matter what happens.
And if we don't acquire the property, is there any, I mean, is this is this part of the negotiations? Or, I mean, it's it's a separate transaction, correct?
It is a separate transaction. The only thing that's been negotiated between the county and Rockstep, as I understand it, is the county answering the question, what if this happens? But obviously, it's not making any commitments on the city's part to pursue that project.
Additional comments or questions? Mr. Scott, how many properties has Rockstep sold off? Under this, I know you said there was approximately fifty three mil- a thousand dollars that would be due to the city off of this abatement. But how many properties has the mall sold off or Rockstep sold off? I believe it's either two or three, but are you aware of that? How many properties you so they sold off?
I I do know there are three parcels that were part of the tax abatement, part of the project. And one of the reasons the value is lower than the parties anticipated at this point, not the only, but one of the reasons is that Rockstep has sold small portions of, I think, the largest parcel, and they made one sale I think in twenty eighteen and one in twenty nineteen, if memory serves. And I don't know a great deal about them, except that it brought the valuation of the three sites cumulatively down from I should have that up, but I don't. It it was a small reduction. It was, you know, a small percentage. I see city planner Schudberg, and she had provided the information to me. She may have a better sense of the size of those sales by Rockstep.
I'm not so interested in the size of the sale. I'm more interested in the fact of acknowledging the fact that there has been some of the property sold off. Which, yes, which would then give some credence to the lowered valuation. If council wishes to have those numbers, I I have no problem with that, but I just wanted to recognize the fact that some of those properties had already been sold off. Additional comments or questions? Local.
Councilmember Chantis.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Alvarado.
Hi.
Osmus.
Hi.
Blahman. Blahman.
You're muted. You're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Fagerly.
Hi.
Meski.
Hi.
Eight eyes, zero Nays.
That resolution passes. I will just make the comment, the project originally came to us. I'm a strong supporter of tax abate subsidy agreement, but was at the time had told me, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure this is a good idea. And it's time for the mayor to eat a little crow. This was obviously not a good idea, so I think we should really look carefully at tax abatement for retail in the future. That being said, we'll go to the next item, which is consideration of close status for city facilities due to recent executive order number twenty dash zero three. Mr. Grammets.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, I think we're all aware that the governor of Minnesota produced the executive order twenty dash one zero three, which opens up some activities starting January four. The issue, I think, before us is what happens between, let's say, the the eighteenth, which was last week, through January four, because I think the facilities, you know, could be opened up, given, you know, some of the statistics and numbers that reflect the COVID infection rate in Candy High County, specifically Wilmer. Don't have numbers just for Wilmer, but Candy High County is seeing a drop in in the infection rate. So there's probably two things that happened that came out of the executive order. The first one was during the eighteenth through the fourth, it opened up, you know, exercise facilities, if you could stay twelve feet away from other participants. And I don't believe that the the city of Wilmer's operation, whether it be at the auditorium, the civic center or the community center, that it those three entities really apply to the you know, whether it be the weightlifting type room facilities or or the the health club sort of situation. Some cities do have facilities that would comply, but Wilmer doesn't necessarily have those that it operates. And so with that, I suppose, you know, we could open up the civic center if somebody wanted to rent it. But it'd be hard to keep people, you know, twelve feet apart at all times unless you split the arena into two or, you know, put up fences or whatever and 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 really, you know, restricted activity. So the real, the real opening of facilities kind of comes after the January first timeline that was set by the city council, you know, a month ago or thereabouts, where they said, you know, we'll close, we'll reassess on January first. And I think the January four date is is is, I think, you know, appropriate to open up because then the use of our facilities, you know, could actually occur. But during this time between the eighteenth and the fourth, I I think in discussions with Park and Rec Director Baumgart, we felt that the that the use of the facilities did not match up very well with the executive order twenty dash one oh three. So I guess our recommendation would be to keep the facilities closed. Most of the people that would use this, now like the civic center, are regulated by like the hockey and 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 other organizations. This is the 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 dead time of the year for those sport team activities. Things come back together after the first of the year. So at this point in time, I don't know that there needs to be any action, you know, by the city council unless there was a desire to open up between now and the fourth. Then that would take an an actual motion by the city council to do to do so. Otherwise, after the first of the year, the governor's executive order allows it on the fourth, and everything would be closed until the the night of the third, and then on the fourth, it would be available to be used as regulated by the executive order and recreational activities. So that's where we find ourselves at this point in time. And so it it's up to the city council if they want to open. But I think from from staff's perspective, it it probably wouldn't see a lot of use and and because you you're not going to see teams practicing. And and it's the executive order just doesn't stay on point for for our use of facilities. So with that explanation, I'll leave that decision up to the city council.
Mr. Grammets, can you tell us, at one point, you had said that we had left the ice on out at the civic center? Is the ice still on at the civic center?
Rob is on tonight in attendance, but I, it's my understanding, everything was operational. Rob, can you verify that?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, member of the councils. We have both sheets of ice still on. What we've done is warmed up the building a little bit and kept down the temperatures down on the ice so we could save on the energy efficiencies of the ice plant.
So with that being said, we have the ice up already. And, you know, there may be a chance to get some revenue here. I've I've talked to a number of, received a number of phone calls, a number of emails in regards to this issue. And I certainly would be in in favor of recognizing the fact that we may be able to see, we already have the ice up to open that up and see if there is anybody out there that wishes to rent it. I know that there was a lady that does figure skating lessons, and she was doing figure skating lessons out on the lakes in the in in the area. And so, you know, so the hockey players are practicing on the ice. I saw them last night as my wife and I returned to town. They were skating out on out on the lake. So, you know, there may be some groups that would say, you know what, seeing the ice is up, you know, we're willing to rent it and to do that. So if the council were favorable to that, I would be fine with that, but I I'll do the same thing the city administrator will do. I'll follow whatever the council wishes to do. We already have our staff on 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 board. Our staff are working. And so it seems to me to be an opportunity to recap some money and give our kids something to do during the Christmas break. So Councilmember Alvarado, followed by Davis.
I was going to make a motion to follow staff recommendation to maintain the facilities being closed until the fourth of January.
I will second it for discussion.
Motion by Alvarado, seconded by Nelson to remain, keep the city facilities open until the fourth of January. Councilmember Davis.
I just wanted to second what what the mayor was saying about renting the space out to people and including hockey players. Maybe there would be some that would want to go there and practice. And I know that the Minnesota Hockey Association has some guidelines where they, the kids have to come fully dressed and wear a mask, and they can't use locker rooms. And I think if they came as a family unit just to practice and they could pay a little fee to use it, maybe that should be okay. That's just my opinion.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. I guess I'd like further clarification from staff since both Mr. Grammets and Mr. Baumgart did not believe that our facility met the requirements to do this. So I I guess I'd like to just hear more with how would we do this? If if we do what what is suggested? And so I would be concerned about exposure for staff and just why staff came up with the recommendation that they did. and just why staff came up with the recommendation that they did.
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor and city councilors, the yeah, it'd be actually section, page eight of the, of the attached executive order, section seven, where it says gymnasiums, fitness centers, rec centers, indoor sports facilities, you know, exercise facilities, martial arts, dance and exercise studios, studios may be open for individual exercise. Well, you know, you know, individual exercise is not team sports. I believe the outside training was, was allowed for an instructor and three individuals maximum. But it's been a day or two since I read this, but Mr. Baumgart, you can, you can chip in if you want to on this, but they, they do differentiate between outdoor activities and indoor activities. And, you know, indoor activities are, I don't think indoor activities would represent having a hundred people on the sheet of ice doing individual exercise or training because you couldn't maintain the twelve feet spacing if you're skating around. How, how do you do that? And so from, from the staff's perspective, it becomes, you know, it becomes easy to understand that you could rent the auditorium out to two people, one person on each end of the, of the basketball court, you know, kind of a thing. Who's going to do that? How many people are you going to allow in the, in the civic center on the ice? And maintain your spacing so you don't run afoul. I mean, it's, and then you're, you're in the holidays and your, your, your team programs are, are, are set to automatically, I think, kind of kick in after the fourth. It just seems like, you know, we open up the facilities for the benefit through the busy holidays of, of how many people. It, it just seemed reasonable to, to maintain till the fourth, open it up like the governor is allowing it and, and move forward. But like I say, it's, it's, Mr. Baumgart has a different position on it. He can, he can definitely voice that. I know we've had discussions, you know, had some emails go back and forth on it. So if you want to hear what Mr. Baumgart has to say, please take this opportunity, Rob, and, and voice your thoughts.
Well, thank you. We've talked to the Hockey Association, figure skating, the curlers. They're not, they're gearing up to come out on the ice on the fourth. If we wanted to do something during this timeframe, it would be on a reservation type of deal where if we wanted to do an open skate, that people would have to call in and reserve their spot so we can keep it to about the ten to twelve people. Because when you look at the social, we would consider that almost like a social gathering that you can only have two households in there and no more than ten people at one time on the ice. And our past history shows too that during this holiday time, there's not a lot of requests to go in, onto the ice. We have scheduled a few open skating times in the past and it'd be very low attended.
Councilmember Maskey.
I like what I'm hearing from staff. When we, when we acted as a city council to restrict those buildings, we had done so before the state of Minnesota did based on the infectious rates in this county. And I'll stand by that move. I know I got a lot of people that were upset about it, but if we're starting to trend in the opposite direction, that's exactly what those types of things are for. And so the rest of the states caught up with us and the governor shut down all these buildings and then put the fact that they could open back up on January fourth. I see no reason why we would ever extend that another day if the infectious rates are doing what they're doing here now. I think that we maybe, I'm hopefully, I'm optimistic that maybe we, because we were front in on it, that maybe we'll be the first off to bring everything back. So I'm not, I, I'm looking at my sheet here of the action request. I am absolutely opposed to extending it beyond what the governor has laid out. I think we should plan accordingly. And if, if there's ways to allow small groups as we just heard from Mr. Baumgart, I think that's something to explore. But I think we're now in line with everything else that is happening. And I think that was the responsible thing to do. I will stand by that decision, but now we are like what it looks like in the rest of the state. And if we're coming back out of it, I think it might be time just to let that sun set at the expected time.
There's no comments or questions. Recommendation of staff is to follow the governor's order in open facilities at the direction of the administrator, starting January fourth of 2021. We'll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Alvarado.
Hi.
Osmiss.
Hi.
Plowman.
No.
Nelson. Hi. Eggerly.
No.
Maskey.
Hi.
Chantis.
Hi.
Thighs, two knees.
That motion passes. Councilmember Maskey.
Do we, can we, do we have to address the specific idea of opening it up for smaller groups as we just heard a possibility from Mr. Baumgart? Or is that something that they have latitude to do without having a discussion here?
I believe the action we just took is to keep everything closed. What my recommendation was is to do exactly that of opening it up to smaller groups, seeing we're having the expenditure. I know in the past, you know, we used to take the ice off. And so we didn't have that additional expense, but we have a new system out there. I'm not familiar with how it works now, but I know it used to take about forty-eight, seventy-two hours to get it back up, but we, we made the decision to continue with that expense and I was trying to recapture some of that. So I don't know how we could do that, but certainly something that I guess I don't know the answer.
Like if I could, I mean, I, I look at this as, as occupancy. I mean, obviously some of the youth sports are going to exceed those types of numbers and households. And so keeping it open or opening it now would be in violation of that interpretation. However, if the interpretation is you can open it for smaller groups than that, I wouldn't be opposed to that either. And so to me, there's a gray area here that basically it's the number of people that are gathering internally. And if you can reduce it and recoup some dollars, I'm not opposed to that either, but the large group gathering is definitely something that the fourth would be the downside. I'm sitting between.
Certainly, I would entertain another motion if somebody wanted to make that motion, but I'm not going to forward it. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was also kind of wondering the same thing. I, I think I raised my hand just a little bit too late, so I apologize, but I was kind of wondering the same thing. I was under the impression that, that the motion that was just made was regarding standard programming or standard policies and procedures for the, for a typical length of time, but I, I would still be open to the idea of the, the, those discretionary openings that could potentially be managed by staff and to, you know, to allow for that because I personally, I feel like, why not? Because the closer we can, you know, we can move towards a, an end goal incrementally, I guess, and that would be a step in that direction. And I don't really see a downside to it. Now, I understand it's a slow time of the year for the team sports, but if there are entities that wanted to, they wanted to take the expense of, of getting the facility and they wanted to take the responsibility of the distancing and whatnot, I believe they have some safety oriented plans. They should be able to do so, in my opinion.
Councilmember Alvarado followed by Nelson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The way I understood the recommendation of the staff was to keep the facility closed because they didn't see it making sense to open it up to groups of, let's say, three or four, because that would not be individual training or something to that effect. So at this point, we have driven, I agree with the council member Maskey, we have driven the the spike down, so does the, the COVID down, the trend down, which is what we want to do. I think we're trying to follow the governor's guidance on this, to maintain facility closed. This is what both the administrator and the director of, of the department have indicated. And I, I just think that I don't know that we're going to recoup that much if we're hiring staff to come in for a handful of of people. I, I don't see that. I think it's going to be a wash and I don't think we're going to gain that much money by opening, opening the facility at this point. But that's just my thought. I think we should maintain what the recommendation is.
Yeah, just a clarification point. As the administrator stated, our staff is still being paid. They're just not there. Councilmember Nelson.
I'm confused. Thank you, Mayor Calvin. I'm confused because that's why I asked the staff to clarify and what I heard was both Mr. Grammets and Mr. Baumgart say that in order to meet the requirements, even if we did want to open up, they were saying that they couldn't make the numbers work or to do that, that they didn't feel it was there and with the timeframe. So I think what everybody wants is for it to be open up and for people to, groups to be able to go. But what I'm hearing is that, that was not what neither Mr. Baumgart or Mr. Grammets said they thought were feasible. So maybe we have to ask staff one more time if, if there's any options that are feasible because that's what I asked the question before for, and I heard both, from both of them that they, their recommendation was no, that it isn't feasible for us to come up with some version right now. So I would ask again for clarification if this is something that's feasible.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't want to get into a he said, we said, she said, but, you know, I mean, I don't, I mean, I've been, I've been out at our civic center a lot and I've never seen a hundred people on the ice. You know, and I don't think anybody's saying we should have a hundred people on the ice. You know, but I think what councilmember Davis was saying is that why can't a family group, I won't speak for councilmember Davis. What I was inferring is why can't a family group go out there or a, an individual who wants to give one single one-on-one lesson in figure skating or techniques on blocking pucks or whatever, and try to recoup some of our expenses. I mean, you know, we kept the ice on, that's an expense. And I was just trying to get to where we could have something for our kids to do. So councilmember Osmiss followed by, I'm sorry, council, yes, councilmember Osmiss followed by Plowman. Going to write these down.
I just, I feel like the expectation of people from the emails that we got was that if we voted to open it up, their expectation was that the hockey team could go out and practice. And I just, I think that the public has to understand that that isn't what we were talking about because that would not be in compliance with the governor's order. That won't be lifted until January fourth. And, and you have stated it, to be perfectly clear, it would be a very limited number of people that could use the ice. You know, we don't all have nine or thirteen kids, so to be able to be a family. No dig.
All have our own hockey team, you're saying?
Yes. But that, you know, the, and I guess if there was somebody that could pay whatever hundreds of dollars to rent the ice for a one-on-one lesson, maybe that could be an opportunity, but this is not going to be a hockey team going out there to be able to practice. The way I understand it.
No, you couldn't have a hockey team out there. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a, a couple of thoughts, and I'm not meaning to challenge staff. I'm not meaning to challenge anybody here because I think everybody's got a good valid point, but number one, yeah, I, I see, I drive past Foot Lake, Wilmer Lake, I see people playing and I see full contact hockey going on. So these kids are going face to face anyways and exchanging air and molecules. So that's a fact. Secondarily, when it comes to cost recapture, I, I, I know that we're not going to recapture our costs, but I think that to be honest, I, I think the psychological benefit is prob, probably outweighs the monetary benefit to the community. And then third, it would be liability, and I don't know exactly where the city's liability stops and an organization's liability starts. I don't know if that's necessarily a rabbit hole that we want to go down to. It's just, I don't know. I mean, I respect, I respect the recommendation by staff, but at the same time, I kind of feel, I feel like they're public, publicly owned facilities. And as much as we can possibly, if we can at all possibly make them available, we should, we, I think it's incumbent on us to, to make them available. I believe it's our responsibility because that we don't own them. We, as a body, don't own them. The city owns them. And so I think, like I said, if possible, I feel like they should be open. If not possible, if it's not able to be done legally, okay, then our hands are tied, whatever. But I would err on the side of liberty versus safety. That's my own personal take. Thank you.
Okay, in the absence of a motion, I'm moving on.
Oh. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with councilmember Plowman, and my question is liability. You know, the park and rec department never wanted to have skating rinks out on the ice on a lake, Foot Lake, Wilmer Lake. You see kids now by the public access on Wilmer Lake. They're over by the fairgrounds by that access. And I drove by Townton Stadium today and down in our big holding pond, there's a hockey goal flipped up there. So kids are playing down there. And that's liability to me because you drive by, you can't see who's down there. So I'm not sure how deep it is, but it could be a disaster. So I would rather have them in a building where you can see what's going on. And the blue line, keep the doors open then, let the air go through and let the kids play. They need to do something. Sioux Falls just had a big basketball tournament for elementary kids. They came from Fargo, South Dakota, Sioux Falls, Iowa and Minnesota. There was no problem there. So you got to open it up. Thank you.
Council, uh, city administrator Grammets.
Just, you know, just to point out, and I, I can't see the age number on this one here, but it has to do with the organized youth sports for outdoor workouts. And it basically says one instructor, no more than three households, and they must maintain twelve feet of distancing from other groups. And that's outdoors. Okay? And, and you can, you can do the training, but, you know, obviously there's, there's no ice police out on the, out on the lakes, making sure that, that, you know, kids don't come in contact with, with each other, which is still a requirement, is that they're not supposed to be actually, you know, fighting over a puck. They're supposed to be working on their skills. And so when you can have groups like that outside, which are very limited in size, inside is even smaller. And, and I think Wilmer is blessed that it has outside ice that, that they can go to and people can have their independence. and people can have their independence. But from the inside perspective, it's, it's pretty limited to to what the governor's order is, which is, which is, you know, less than the outdoor rules. So that's where staff is coming from, just saying it is so limited, but we, we put it out here that if you want to open it up, even though it's limited, we'll do it. Not a problem. But we felt it was your decision to do this. So to the extent that you, as a council, says, open it up from now until the fourth and we'll see what happens, that's, that's fine with me. It's just that not a lot's going to happen. We know that just because the numbers of people that are allowed in the facility. So we just want to make sure, you know, you have opportunity to know what we know and, and what opportunities are available.
Next, we have council member announcements. I'll start with Councilmember Fagerly. Councilmember Fagerly.
We are, oh, not committee meetings. No, I just want to say thank you to Sean, Kathy, and Fernando for their service. It's been a pleasure working with you guys. I enjoyed you guys immensely. So good luck and take care.
Councilmember Mesky.
Well, first, thank you, Rick. I would second that, come the other way, that what makes the council work is people that speak their mind, that are passionate about the city and want the best for the city. And, and everybody on this council does that. I appreciate every one of you. I think we'll probably have more council after this. When we can meet again for coffee and or something stronger, but don't feel free, feel free to call me for any of that kind of activity. For the rest of the city, have a happy holiday. Be, be careful out there, but please, by all means, have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Take care and we will turn a corner on this COVID thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Chiantis.
Thank you. Again, I just echo that it's been a real pleasure and an honor to be able to serve. And Merry Christmas to everyone and may 2021 be a nice, quiet, calm, healthy year.
Councilmember Davis.
I want to echo what, what Councilmember Fagerly said and thanks Sean, Kathy, and Fernando. It's been a pleasure working with you and I feel like I've learned a lot from each one of you. And, and then I want to say during this Christmas season, I really enjoyed seeing all of the people paying it forward in the drive up lines and just people buying gift cards from the businesses that are hurting and giving them out for gifts. And just keep up the good work, everyone. It's great to see.
Councilmember Elvira.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank you for your leadership, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank work, working with the counselors. I've said it before, I've enjoyed my opportunity to work with each one of you. We don't, haven't always agreed, but hey, you know what? That's what makes us special. And, and, and willing to listen to each other. And I, I, I think what I liked most is we were trying to do what's best for the city, that positive intent. And I think that's what we all had. And I was very excited about being a part of this group. And I hope that the new counselors will, will have that same positive intent and remembers it's, it's about the city. It's about the community and it's about making Wilmer a regional city and a better city. So I, I want to say good luck to them. And I want to wish the community happy holidays. Be safe out there, like somebody else said, be safe, enjoy the lights. There's lots of lights. Make sure your neighbors are doing well. And thank you for the opportunity to serve the city of Wilmer. I will greatly appreciate it forever. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Osmiss.
Well, I have to, have to chime in. I came on the council with Kathy and Fernando. It was, it was, it was fun campaigning and we all had that, that drive and that push that we were committed and wanted to do what was right for Wilmer. And as Fernando would often say about Robins Island, you're just a diamond in the rough. A pleasure working with you. And Sean, we're, we're going to miss you on labor. I mean, you were a force and you had great knowledge that you brought to the, that committee and on the council. And I've just really enjoyed working with all of you guys. And we're going to miss you because you had some, some really deep, deep dedication to do what was right for the city. And I'm just, I've been honored to work with you. And I think I think the city is, is unfortunate to lose your skills. But thank you for your service.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got to echo it again. Sean, Fernando, Kathy, thanks to each one of you individually for your own objectivity and your own perspective that you brought to the table to each and every meeting, whether it was a standard meeting, a committee meeting, or a, a council retreat, I have learned something from each one of you. I think we've all, we've all learned something from each one of you. And I especially, I, I remember the times when we would get into a debate and I think I would learn the most when we were maybe on opposing sides of an issue. But I think each one of you are great ambassadors and advocates for how to properly voice an opinion, how to respectively voice an opinion and how to do so with class. So I appreciate that. And, and I hope the community appreciates that as well. To the community, Merry Christmas. Also echoing what's already been said, the, the social media initiatives, how everybody's really pushing buy local if you can, try to get them dollars circulating locally, support our local entrepreneurs. They have a lot of their own, there, I mean, it's their livelihoods on the line, a lot of them. And that, that means a lot. And people's generosity, that means a lot. And when people see others being generous, it inspires them. So let's continue that on. Let's keep the ball rolling. We got a, we got a couple of days left here this week. Let's have a, a real strong final push. And hey, it's been a 2020 trial by a fire. To those of you who will remain, we're going to go into the next year stronger than ever before. Differences, similarities, whatever, doesn't matter. We made it through a 2020. To the incoming council members, welcome. We want to roll out the carpet for you. Thank you for signing up to do this job. You'll soon learn the, the good, the bad, the ugly. If it can be put like that. But there's a lot to the position. And we look forward to having you here. I personally look forward to having you here. And here's to 2021. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. Just a couple of things. We got an email today from the League of Minnesota Cities regarding the Elected Leaders Institute training. I hope each of you will check that out. We got a little sneak preview on the board meeting this week. It's really unique what they're doing. I think it's a great opportunity for all the council members to look. And they're doing an interesting format that, that isn't so time consuming either with, with that. So I would just encourage you to go to the website and check it out. I too want to say thank you to Kathy and Sean and Fernando for your time and energy. I know we all want what's best for Wilmer and you will be missed. And I thank you for that. That and wish you the best in whatever you, you ventures you do in the future. Also, just happy holidays, Merry Christmas, be safe, take care, all of those things. And I'll quit with that. Thanks.
Thank you. I also want to wish our community a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We've got a lot of great things happening. I think we'll have a very productive 2021 and beyond. As I've stated before, I, I will not be running for reelection. So I have two years left to serve on the council. And so it will be a lot of fun to see what's going to happen the next few years. With that, I'll go to public or to announcements, Public Works, Public Safety.
Public Works, Public Safety, because people are going to be traveling and, and Christmas is right around the corner. We are not meeting this week. We are going to wait. We took care of all of our necessary business. So we'll wait till the first week of January. Thank you.
Finance.
There is no finance meeting.
Community development.
There is no community development meeting.
Labor.
Well, they already know because we met last time, but there is no labor committee. But let me just take the opportunity to publicly thank the members of the labor committee. I think they were outstanding colleagues and we did a lot of very difficult work. We went into closed session alone, like we're probably going to do here shortly. And I've appreciated every one of them. So no meeting next week. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will go into closed session and we will take a fifteen minute break. We'll reconvene at ten o'clock.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that there was a link that was sent out for the special meeting. Just in case other people hadn't seen that, it was sent about seven oh five.